Today's date is December 21st. Not excited about that last meeting, am I? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by a dear friend Reverend Dwight Semino from Westfield Community Church. If you'll all please rise and then stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you please bow your head in his name and pray. Our precious and most kind Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for all of your many blessings, most importantly for your Son, Jesus Christ. We also thank you for our great country, this state, this county, and all of the miracles you've pulled off to get us here tonight, safe and sound. As this is the final meeting of the year, we also thank you for the year, for the hope we see in the improved economy, the hope we see in less military excursions, and the hope we see as a new year is only 12 days away from tonight. Grant us your favor tonight in this final city council meeting of the year, that all may be done decently and in order, that peace may abound, that much may be done. Grant also that within, all within the sound of my voice tonight, may know the full joy of the Christmas season, the reason for the season, and we pray that their hopes and dreams for the holidays will be fulfilled with joy, with wonder, with happiness, and most of all, with family. Thanking you again for all of your blessings. In Jesus' name they all said, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Dwight. Item four is the approval of motion summary of the regular meeting of council held December 11th, 2017, as recorded and transcribed.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Got it.
Done.
I have a motion by Mr. Hellinger, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary for the Records Commission meeting held on May 25th, 2017.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve item 5A.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of it, and we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
Nothing there.
Mrs. Keller?
None.
Mr. Browning?
None.
Mr. Rohr?
None.
Mr. Hellinger?
None.
All right.
The new committees will be signed?
January.
January.
I'll get on it. Number eight is consideration of a new liquor permit. Elaine, if you want to read this in, and there it is.
Item A, Juan McGwin LLC Doing Business as Jenny's Nail Spa &amp; Bar, 1824 through 1828 Columbus Pike, Delaware, Ohio, 43015, permit class D2.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a liquor permit request from Jenny's Nail and Spa &amp; Bar, 1824 through 1828 Columbus Pike. You previously heard a very similar request on October 9th. There's no real update to the, to the background since that time. There was, we found no reason to request a hearing to file an objection at that time. It's just a different permit for the same business, which is not yet open.
So did it change owners again?
No, they're adding a permit to their business. So the first one was for, first permit is a D3, I think, which allows for, allows for spiritus liquor on premise until 1:00 a.m. The current request is for a D2, which is wine and mixed beverages for on premise. So they're very similar. They didn't really have an answer to why they doubled up on their permit, but it's another permit.
Okay. What is the wish of council?
We accept without objection.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mrs. Keller. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
For discussion of the Delaware Arts Festival, request for closure of San Jacinto Street South Block continued, which is a continued discussion from the council meeting that was held on December 11th, 2017.
Thank you. Do you, does the Arts Festival have anything else to add at this time?
We do not unless you have questions.
Okay. Well, I spoke to a couple, Elaine spoke to one, and you spoke to one, right? So you spoke to Opa, and he's here too. I guess he could speak for himself tonight. And I think he was fully aware of everything that was addressed. I know I spoke to the Flying Pig Ale, Pig Ale, and they were not aware of any of it. In fact, they were a little upset because they said they specifically asked if there are going to be food trucks, and they were told no. That's just what I'm told, I wasn't there. And then, and then she was not aware of it either. And I think you talked to Amados?
Yes, that was more just to let him know.
Okay.
I didn't ask her. He said that they were planning on coming, but I actually don't see.
He said he couldn't make it, but he didn't talk to me by phone tonight. He was not, he was opposed to the food trucks.
So, we have five restaurants in that block? One, two, three, four? Vitos doesn't have three, do they? Okay, so they have five. Did anybody talk to Vitos? Okay, so of the four, we've got three against and one supported. So you guys, what do you guys want to do?
May I?
Absolutely.
So I've been tossing this around in my head a little bit of what if we had five restaurants, but all five said no. So I was discussing with Mr. Holman, is our policy that the restaurants have to approve, or is it the policy that restaurants just need to say, "We were informed that this is an issue?" Because, in my opinion, I can understand why restaurants wouldn't be in favor of having food trucks for a special event like this, but from the special events perspective, it makes sense. So we have this conflicting viewpoints here, but I don't think that the restaurants should be able to veto a festival and veto food trucks for one weekend. If we were talking every First Friday, I think that would have to weigh a little bit more heavily, but for this use, I think the Arts Festival has demonstrated that they've really made an effort to try to include our local businesses in the vendors with the packets, and I was impressed by that effort. So I'm personally okay with it.
I do want to remind you all, this is also Alumni Weekend, which is a really busy weekend for everybody, for all of Delaware, not just the Arts Festival, but the alumni, and most of them do come downtown, and I know the restaurants are very busy also from down. So they're, you know, some of them said, "Well, I don't want to lose the business that normally comes in as a food truck." I don't necessarily know that that would happen, but that was also brought to my attention too, that I had forgotten it was Alumni Weekend.
I think that if they know in advance, then they can prepare for that, so they could always have a little sign outside that says, "We have cash and carry food available," or "Come in, we have an Arts Festival special." So as long as, I think that what we need to do actually to make it easier for the organizers is clear up and tighten up that policy of, you need to let the local business owners know what your plan is, and have them just check off that they've seen it, to kind of make that easier for the organizers and for the local businesses to say, "This is what the plan is, check that I've seen it." Not, "I agree" or "disagree," because if it's a voting contest, then we need to make that more clear in the way that we do it in the procedure.
I don't really see this, the restaurants having veto power, but I certainly think we should take into consideration how they feel about it.
For sure.
I think in this case, the organizers have tried to go out of their way to make sure that the kind of vendors they're bringing in aren't likely to compete, and then they've incentivized the restaurants to participate. Ideally, I'd love to find a place to put the food trucks, it wasn't a place for some restaurants, I just don't know where that is. But I tend to agree with you, this is a one-a-year event, and they've done all they can other than not add food trucks, and then totally come up with a better solution, I think we just go ahead with it. And I think a lot of people that are coming downtown from Alumni Weekend are probably going to eat at the restaurant anyway, so hopefully it'll still be good for business for everybody.
Thoughts, George?
Going back to my previous discussions on food trucks, I, I don't think of a brick and mortar that is endangered by a food truck is, it probably needs to reevaluate the business plans. I don't see it as a threat.
I'm in favor of it, of expanding it. I think more people will offset anything else. It's good. I'm for it.
Okay. I did have somebody tell me, "Can't they just spread them out and put a food truck in front of thermals, and one in front of buns, and one in front of 1890?" I said, "That doesn't work, logistically electric the whole nine yards, it just doesn't work that way." So that was just a joke, so don't let anybody get that. So, do you want to take this to a vote?
Well, I, Lee refreshed my memory this morning regarding this practice that was put in place back in 2015 when there were some issues of the middle block closing and the north block, and Councilman Schaefer had proposed that as part of the application process that when a, when the third, when a third block was requested to be closed, that council be advised of that. And that's really what was happening this evening, and I, I hear there's consensus, general consensus, that you're okay with this. And so, unless otherwise, unless you object otherwise, Darren, I don't think a formal...
No. I mean, nothing's been set up so far that would require a formal vote, in terms of the spirit of what council asked for back in 15. I think we've met that. However, council certainly could ask, we would like to vote, but there's nothing says we have to.
I would say if you're, if you're satisfied, then they would start back into the application process with, with Lee and Jackie and the, and the safety services and, and get moving with the, getting it organized.
Just, can I add just a point of clarification for a moment? Is that there are some, because of the change of the food trucks, there are some logistical things that need to be worked out, and we can, if there are costs associated with that, there, there are no monies budgeted for 2018 to make these changes. And so unless council wants to approve this additional cost, once we know what those are, you know, I just want to make sure that, that the Arts Festival organizers are, understand that this is an approval that will go ahead and, you know, amend all the electric and everything's okay, we still have to go back through the process, and Lee and I will help you through that. So I just wanted to be really clear, just that everybody's...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is the third reading of ordinance 17-74. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Amended ordinance number 17-74, an ordinance making appropriations for the year 2018 and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and further to provide lawful appropriations available for expenditure by January 1st, 2018, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Mr. Holman?
Yes, so we are at the third and final reading of the 2018 budget, which was placed before you on August 15th. You've held a number of work sessions, and you've just, third public reading.
It's November 15th, not August.
What did I say?
You said August.
That was the capital.
That'd have been a long discussion.
November 15th, I'm sorry, stand corrected, November 15th. It's been, that's when it was presented, you've held work sessions regarding it, you have discussed changes that were outlined in an email that was sent last week, and then again in the packet that went out to you on Tuesday of this week. And so, with the exception of, you know, some of the changes, we would recommend council's approval of the 2018 budget as amended, because the changes that you discussed that are reflected in the memorandum are included in the budget ordinance. So those changes that have been discussed are reflected in these numbers. So by adopting this amended ordinance, you would be adopting those changes. You can handle it separately too, you can vote on the changes separately, but there was general consensus when we went through these to include these as part of the amended ordinance, so. I was watching the news, I think it was last night, maybe this morning, and they said something about some planetary alignment the first time in 440 years. So I think we actually have a planetary alignment here also. I continue to oppose the $4,000 for Sister City in, in the community promotion budget. I can see though where those monies not, would not be allocated for that, but could potentially be allocated to help cover the costs associated maybe with the electric required down there. I mean, it's in the same vein as community promotion, it would, and, you know, money has to come from somewhere. But that's, I do not support that $4,000 in the Sister City part of the community promotion budget, and I would like to see that stricken from this part.
What's that $4,000 supposed to, what's intended to cover for Sister City?
Any costs that, that might be incurred in 2018 with regards to bomb holder, they're opening their, their museum that we, they're going to invite city officials to in 2018, and the costs associated with that, but it's not, we, we've not yet heard when that's, when that's going to be exactly. We don't know who would be going over representing the city, obviously, probably Carolyn and maybe others, but there's nothing beyond that at this point. Obviously, our, we did incur some expenses with respect to the cicada trip, we're out of the 2017 budget, we don't expect to really incur anything cicada related, so if it's Sister City, it's probably more, it's more bomb.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of have to go with George on that too, it's just, it's a very limited scope with that money, as opposed to everything else that's in that budget for community promotions. I mean, I think with that list, if you talk to the communities, oh, hardly anybody knows anything about Sister City, you know, or what's other things people probably could relate to.
Well, we kind of got sprung then when the cicada delegation just came back in October, we did not realize city officials were coming, and so it took a lot to plan and take care of those people while we're here, trying to plan the arts coming over here in 19 and the year 2001. So there was some additional expenses there, and I can see that happening again. So I just think it's important to keep money, if we're going to have Sister Cities, I'm not saying it's got to be $4,000, but I think it's important to keep money in there when these things come up. Yes, sir.
Just by way of process, just I think they, and I don't have a decision on the other, but it's in the draft, it's in there right now, and probably the easiest thing would be if you wanted to strike a particular line, you would make a motion to either strike or remove that line, as opposed to, I mean, certainly talk first, but that would be the mechanics of doing it, because we want to vote on it tonight, and we want to have a budget. So I can help you make the motion, but I think if you make the same deal, motion second, and then the clerk will have to make notes of that, and then when we finally sign it, we'll have that part changed. I think that would be the logistical way of doing it.
I don't have my budget here, but what's the total amount of the budget?
I think it's $5,000.
No, 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 the total amount of the, this year's 2018 budget total.
Hundred and seven...
You mean just for community promotions? No, no, no.
Oh, for the whole budget?
The whole budget.
All funds, $114,706,000.
So what percentage is 4,000 of that?
In general fund, it's 22 million, but all funds, it's 114. But I think to George's point and to Chris', if, if you were so inclined, you could keep, you could keep 2,000 in there with the understanding that council would have to come back and review and approve those expenditures, move three over to the, I don't know what the cost of this electric would be.
Yeah, and we don't know either, Tom, because they were saying many of their food truck folks bring their own generators, so we don't know at this time what that cost would be, because, you know, not knowing, you know, council's direction, we didn't take it any further.
Just as a suggestion, I don't want to see us abandon our Sister City program by not putting any funds for it. What if we split that $5,000, allocate half to the infrastructure stuff that we need for the Arts Festival, and you need the other half in for Sister City, and then if we need a supplemental someplace as we move along, we could always do that.
Do we normally fund Arts Festival?
We don't, I think.
I know.
No, we don't, but just for this, when we did the Streetscape project, we added, I think at the city's expense, the upgraded electrical power on Winter Street, which has allowed us to provide, increased, if we're going to have more third city, third block closings, it probably might make sense to do this, although as Jackie indicated, it may not be necessary.
We'll find out.
We'll know more, but you could just, it into, you have a column in there right now, 5291, special events, you could put some, put some dollars in there, just indicate that we have to come back to you to, to, to expend the money. And that's one way to do it.
Thoughts? You two are all quiet on this side.
I tend to agree with Chris and George, but I think arranging it such a fashion that you have to come back to us.
I like Tom's suggestion.
Let's go again.
Well, that was... Even as allocated, you have, you have the special events item in there, and just with the expectation we have to come back.
I just know Sister City's been around for four or five years now, and it just seems like we're finally getting off the ground and trying to do things at First Fridays, we've got an event coming up on January 9th that I was going to tell you about. So I just, if I, if we need some money in that, if the group needs some money to do something to promote it, I would just like there to be something that it uses.
I agree.
$2,500, I mean, I think, right? I thought there was, I thought we were talking $4,000, not $5,000.
There was a thousand in there from last year, I believe, and then they added 4,000 this year, got correct, Jackie?
Is that what it reads, Jackie?
The 2017 actual for, there was a thousand in alignment, but the actual for 2017 ended up being $3,750, so we actually increased it by $4,000 from what was actually budgeted. Does that make sense?
So is five what's reflected in there?
Five is what's in there, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where you could move some of it.
I move, I move, we transfer $2,500 to these special events funds, that was?
Go see Delaware Special Events.
Special Funds Account, and leave $2,500 in Sister City.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Browning, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones? I do. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, this moment saw a mistake in this line, in this fund.
Okay.
The Main Street Support Council directed, directed staff to place in that line, in that line item, $25,000. Only 20 is reflected in there, and so if council still wishes to make the $25,000 to Main Street, then you would also need to...
No, no, it's 25, Jackie, it's 25. Yeah, it's in there.
It's 25.
It's reflected in the revised budget sheet that you have.
Okay.
It shows 25.
I apologize.
Yeah, you, there was an over, there've been a lot of versions of this thing.
I apologize.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, I've got it. All right, so I have a motion, Mr. Browning, and a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
They don't need to change the ordinance, it's just, yeah, I was just telling Darren he was going to interrupt, but you don't need to amend the ordinance, because the ordinance is correct, you're just shifting the detail.
Okay.
So that's all you're voting on.
I just wanted to make sure Elaine had that.
She does now.
I'll listen.
Roll call.
Okay.
Put it before another question.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
You looking at me for?
So community promotions has stayed the same, we've just allocated, reallocated. Were there any other changes? If not...
Need a motion to...
I'll move for passage of the 2018 budget. Second.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Browning, a second by Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item 11 is second reading of ordinance 17-77.
Ordinance for 17-77, an ordinance amending the Delaware Municipal Court and Clerk of Court employee benefits and lead policies and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 27th, 2017. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Okay, we need to back up, just go back up to number 10, because there was an emergency clause that Mr. Browning forgot.
I will...
Let's redo it.
I will move to waive the, what's the language? Adopted emergency clause?
I have a motion by Mr. Browning, a second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I will move for passage of the amended budget for 2018. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Browning, a second by Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Just as a point of clarification for council, so you have several pay ordinances, and your rules say, as a general rule, they will proceed to three readings, and we're fine with that. So if you want, then the clerk can just, Elaine can read all of those in the record if there's any discussion, but that's what your pay compensation, it says as a general rule, they go to three readings, so.
Well, we've gone three readings and everything, right?
So 11 through 15?
Yes. Go ahead.
We're going to do it for the planning, we're going to do it for the...
Just for these pay ordinances for now, then.
Ordinance number 17-78, in ordinance amending ordinance number 16-108 establishing the pay and benefits for various part-time and intermittent and seasonal employees of the City of Delaware and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. Emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 27, 2017. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
I did read it.
You do?
And then you went back.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read it again?
No, no, you're good, keep going.
Ordinance number 17-79, in ordinance amending the Management Professional Technical Confidential and Supervisory Employee Pay Plan and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. Emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 27, 2017, which coincides with the new calendar year. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage. Ordinance number 17-80, in ordinance amending the employment agreement with the city manager and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 27, 2017, which coincides with the new calendar year. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage. Ordinance number 17-81, in ordinance amending the schedule of fees and service charges.
Thank you. And Darren, I think we have a change in 14?
Yes.
With Tom's car allowance?
Yeah, so it did not appear in this packet because of our current schedule, but I will send it out for review and it will be included in the next packet. I can send it out before, so you can review it. It's not a substantive change. It just cleans up the language that we talked about before.
All right, thanks, Elaine. So those will all come back for one more reading for the next reading.
Yeah, the third and final reading. We'd ask for adoption at that meeting.
Yes. Okay, after you breathe, I'm reading item 16, which is the second reading of ordinance number 17-84.
Ordinance number 17-84, in ordinance for Trade Plus Communities for Approval of a Final Development Plan for Borough Commons containing 92 apartment units on approximately 20.06 acres on B3 PMU, Community Business District with a plan which use overlay district and located on the north side of State Route 37 just west of Westfield Shopping Center and just east of Lannan Chase subdivision.
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of council. We presented this at your last meeting. Your planning commission and staff recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dave? Any questions for the applicants? They're all here smiling. If no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 17-84.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
And I'll move for the approval of ordinance 17-84.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion passes. Good luck. Merry Christmas, all you.
When do you expect to get started?
Hopefully in spring. Yeah, we just need, the reading is just underway. And so we need to get a little bit further up there and then we'll start here.
Okay.
Like throughout, we'll not start the winter. We've come out twice now. It's not easy to do it, so, so we're excited.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 17 is consideration of ordinance number 17-85.
Ordinance number 17-85, in ordinance supplementing the 2017 appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city. And for the further reason that such action is necessary to provide for purchases through the end of the fiscal year being December 31, 2017. And as such, will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer?
The year-end supplemental was included in the packet and then resubmitted. But also attached to that was a brief explanation of some of the issues related to that, although there are several of them listed. Not as many as the past years. I would also comment that in general, the bulk of our budgets were way under budget. You don't see those, but, so, we probably, I think we did fairly well with budget management in 2018. Most of these issues were things that, you know, we were aware of. It just was a matter of making the adjustment to the budget, so.
Do you know how happy you would make Joe right now?
Oh, yeah. So I'd entertain any questions related to any of it.
That's right, someone needs to at least make a comment. Holding Dean for the supplemental.
Yeah.
Making sure he's aware of it. It's really not a helpful thing to do. Courtesy of Mr. DeGeno.
Yeah.
Joe, we miss you. Is there a motion on item 17?
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 17-85.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of the emergency clause on ordinance 17-85, second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance 17-85, second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries. City managers report.
Not a lot, just wish everybody a happy Christmas and a great new year. And on behalf of city staff, we look forward to another productive year. 2018 is shaping up to be a busy one, but I think we'll get right at it. And we've got a retreat planned in February where we will be addressing a lot of the issues. So look forward to working with you, continue working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I can't bite my tongue. It's going to drive me crazy the rest of the night, but I don't know if you just paid attention to what happened here five minutes ago. But these folks said they weren't going to start the project until spring. And you went through the funeral around City Hall last Tuesday after we went to go to a third arena this thing. Everybody was crying the blues about not suspending the rules. And then the people just said they were going to spring to do it. So we need to stop with this. Suspend the rules for development. Everything's an emergency. Now we just did a perfect example why we broke the rules for nothing. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Mrs. Keller? Merry Christmas.